What is this stuff you put down?
That number ten limestone.
So it's just like, it's just packs?
It's packs, yeah.
It looks like a pile of sand.
Yeah, it's packs. It's like a sand, but it's limestone. When you're packs.
I mean, I've rode the bike on the trail, I know. But, um, what about when you have that big pile?
No. Once we spread it and then we take one over the roller. And then, what is good if we get a rain.
Which you did have a rain.
We had a rain right after we did it. And that made that thing nice. We got, we got people came to the race that never been on the Montour Trail. And they said, "We will be back."
Oh, yeah.
We're considered a model for United States.
And I saw these little signs going up there. Dog crossing signs. Hi, Tony. In, um, in, um, Ridge Road. These little signs on each side of the trail. You know where you come up?
Yeah. I don't know, I've never seen them.
And which way is up? Do you want them on here?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't notice it was signed up down.
Yeah, there's, they're full. You know where you had, like, we were gonna put those stop signs up and they said, uh...
No, I never, I never was gonna put stops on.
Well, whatever they were.
They were yield signs.
Well, they are little yield signs. Dogs or something.
Yeah.
I saw them today as a kid down.
I never, I didn't.
Are they there, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
What are, isn't there a little dog on them? Somebody's kinda going by. That is not like a traditional yield sign. Some little decorative something on it.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you all rise for a salute of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our things not working.
Okay. Now, the, the roll call here. Supervisor Schrader, Cassiola, Ludwin, Codwin, and Fisher are all present. In addition...
Cowden.
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 Yes, C-O-W-D-N.
Cowden. In addition, township manager Janusa, police chief Bukowinski, public works Bill Bodoroff, zoning director Bill Bruce Bosley, and engineer Dan Deserot of Gateway and township solicitor John Smith. Okay, now, the beginning of the meeting starts here with comments will be taken at any time for any item that appears on the agenda, and then any general comments or questions. This is a resident's opportunity to step forward and have your concerns addressed. After this comment period, the township business meeting will begin, and there'll be no further questions or comments from the floor. Please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is items on the agenda. Okay, first of all, is there anything for anybody on the agenda first? Okay, now we'll go into everyday comments. Okay, go ahead. State, state your name and tell us.
My name's Al Patechko. We're five seventeen Swayheart Road. And the reason why I'm here this evening is because of a water problem that has been going on for about five years. It all started when they resurfaced Swayheart Road on the northern end, I guess it would be. And ever since they resurfaced the road, you have pictures up there to look at. There's been water running onto both of my properties. About three years ago, Don Janosa was contacted by me. He was up on my, up on Swayheart Road to, uh, to look at what was going on after a rain. And I was told that he would take care of it. Well, that was three years ago. So, the reason why I'm here, I would appreciate it if somebody would take another look at it and try to address this problem. And like I said, it's been going on for five years now since the road was resurfaced.
Now, it looks like you live on the downhill side there, is that?
Yes.
Is that 'cause there's, I'm looking at those pictures you just showed us, and it looks like there's a curb on the uphill side. But on the downhill side, it's, it's not, it's missing there. And so it has the opportunity to just drain straight across onto your property, correct?
They put two drains in, but it's not, or was it one drain or two?
No, there's, there's always been a drain on the far end down, down on my other property. But when they resurfaced the road at those two particular areas, for some reason, it was sloped, sloped the wrong way. It wasn't sloped towards the side that it should run down. And just, there's two areas, and it's marked up there, 'cause I marked them, there's two areas where the water is running across and running down into my property. And when it rains real hard, it gets pretty bad. And now, the property that owns next door to my personal residence, there's water getting into the basement when it rains real hard because of the amount of water that's being, that's running off the road down into my yard.
Don, have, uh, have you or Bill gone out to look at this at all?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, yes, I did. And I got Dan, our engineer, involved. And, uh...
Can you speak up, Don, so they can hear you?
Yes, please, I can hear you.
Actually, I did get involved. And I also asked for the assistance of our engineer, Dan, and I believe Dan wrote a report to that. We're going to get the involvement of one of our contracted pavers who would be able to bring a milling machine in to re-profile that road at that section. Dan, if, Dan, Dan will probably explain it.
That's what I recall. There's a slight pitch in the wrong direction there that's, that took the water the other way. So, um, I think we can get a price on that and we can get back to the board. That's all I can say at this point.
Do you think just milling the road would, would do it there? Um, what about a curb? Would a curb help out? Would that be feasible instead of milling, or what?
I, I don't think it's, it's all curvy, Andy. It's pitched, it's pitched in a direction, at least, I mean, there was just very slight, slight changes up there that, that happened. And I think it's, I think it's pretty minor. I think it could be fixed with paving. I usually don't try to fix drainage with paving, but in this case, I think it could.
Okay. Well, we'll have them look into it then and see whichever way it is.
Bill, are you familiar with the locations that he's talking about?
I'm not.
I didn't think so. It would be the northerly end of Swayheart Road, maybe eight hundred feet from, from nine eighty. Is that about right?
Yeah, so that is correct.
And he's on the low side. What's your address there?
Five seventeen, five thirty five.
Butts.
There are two separate locations where the water's coming in.
Okay.
And it's, it's marked up there.
Well, we'll have them look at it and see what would be the best remedy for it. If he feels milling would be better, then, then curb or whatever, whatever works out the best to alleviate that.
Cut this side, crowded. Where's this water running to?
Now, now, Dan, there's only drains on one side, you're saying, then, on that part of the road?
I'm not sure, Andy. It's been, it's been a couple of years. We'll get it, we'll get it back and track and figure it out, get back to the board.
Okay, we'll, we'll have Dan look at it.
I would appreciate it because I was told a couple of years ago that the problem would be fixed and it's never been addressed or even taken care of. And now it's damaging into my basements on my own property and my next door property. And, and it's coming into walls, and my walls are starting to deteriorate and all the concrete starts coming out of blocks. So now I'm getting into more of a major problem with this.
Okay.
So I would like it fixed because if it's not, we're gonna have lots more problems than we're having now.
We'll get them to look at it. We'll have an answer by the next meeting.
Teresa, can you come to the next meeting?
Yes.
And we'll have some answers by then, what we feel is the best way to handle it, okay?
Okay.
Any other, anybody else that wants to come up and discuss that? Hello.
Good evening. I'm Linda Kernan, live on one seventeen Concello, Kansasburg, Versus Park. And I'm actually coming up to see what's been, what's going to be going on with our road closure signs. I spoke to John last month, and he said that it's kinda like it's, nothing's happening because Apple Hill hasn't done anything. But the problem has been is that the workers are going up there because there is such a big throughway to go. It's, it's, it's open. The road, there's road closure signs, but it's open. I'm sorry, I have pictures and I, I left them at home. But, uh, so the road workers in the morning and in the evening are going up there. And one day, on Saturday, when Olla didn't park her car there, I must've had five or six cars come up my road and then turn around because they think that it's a throughway. So then I went down and stood down at the end of the road, and there, there was at least four cars that came through when I sat there, stood there for about ten minutes. So the word's either getting around that nobody's parking down there or whatever, but...
Linda, did you, you said workers?
The workers for Apple Hill Construction. They're going up there.
They're coming through, they're...
That's the way they're going in.
What, with their vehicles?
Yes. And I did talk to the chief, because we had to address the stop sign again. It was time to sit down there and get a couple of people ticketed so they'll stop doing it, which was very effective. But I appreciated, Chief, and you were right on it when I explained it, because with the schools, there's kids that were going down there and just going through the stop signs, you know, the teenagers. So now they're stopping because I don't think their parents appreciated a three-point ticket on a stop sign. So, um...
And you ticketed them?
Or warnings, whatever.
Yeah, we, we cited, give them warning, but we did address the issue whenever she called.
Yes, so that, that helps. That's such an ongoing problem that...
I can, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Did you ticket any of them or just gave...
Yeah, there were citations issued, yes. And we did sit up at the top of the hill. We had cars monitor the, uh, the closed, road closed signs. Um, the officers did have, like, uh, she did state, sometimes there's a car parked there and cars cannot get through then. Uh, but then there are times in the morning when they're, the family's not home, that's when they're sneaking around the barriers, so...
Put a bigger road close sign or another one so...
Yeah, I think that's what she's gonna be asking here soon, about extending the barriers.
Yeah, if, if we're gonna hold back on Apple Hill, and they don't have any reason to press the issue right now. So, and Mohammed did say that he would, he would be not against the gate. I don't, you know, my, my husband and I talked about it, you guys are much, to put a gate where the road close sign is, and he's willing to open and close that gate if he has to get into his driveway. So I don't really know what the solution is. I mean...
That's up to Bill. I mean, I don't know if we could do a gate, but could we at least put enough road close signs or something so that we're blocking the road?
Or, Bill, do I have any Jersey barriers left?
I believe you do, Elizabeth.
How many?
Two.
Two. Now, the issue with the closure is the, the, uh, the ownership is a sawtooth going down the middle of the road. So the, the, as you, as you approach the end of the road on, on the left-hand side is a road close sign. And on the other side, as you approach Cannonsburg further in towards Mohammed's property, uh, there's a road close sign. So what they're doing is jotting in between those, those barriers. But there's an offset to the property line. And, and if we were to put a barrier between that spot right there, it would limit Mohammed's ability on the radius in, in and out of his driveway. It would limit his ingress and egress from the, uh, to his driveway. So we've tried not to do that. We set the barrier back far enough on the Cannonsburg line to allow access to his driveway. I'm, I'm not sure if we can put a gate up there. The problem with the gate is emergency vehicles, of course.
Chains is probably the same thing. Because it, because that one side of the property of the, is his property totally. So he's, he's willing to have any, I, I don't know, you know, really. It's just, it's a shame because they're, they're coming through, they're speeding, they're cursing, they're fingering, you know?
Well, you're right, you know, it is his property, though. It is on the Cannonsburg side, but it is his property. And that might be something we have to look into if you do put a gate up of some type. But, um, I don't know if you lock it or whatever, or say people can't go through the gate or whatever. If they go through, then they have a right to ticket them if they're doing it.
I don't know, I mean, maybe we just...
Pro-close signs is what we'd be enforcing, so it wouldn't be the fact that a gate would make any difference. If anything, they'd be trespassed by the vehicle. And, um, again, it's, it, we're gonna continue to be up there, but it's a guessing game when it's happening. We, we believe it's happening in the morning, evening, rush hour. Like, um, she was saying that, uh, it possibly is the workers, but, um, we will be continuing to monitor that as much as we can, as well as the stop sign below.
Well, Bill, why don't you go there and talk to Dawn or talk to Sean and see what our other options are? I mean, maybe you can come up with something that will...
Where are we at, though, with, uh, I know we, she was asking, I, I don't even know where we're at with the litigation part?
John.
Sorry, John.
Standoff.
We're here now. We've, we've obviously been in discussions. I, I think, you know, we're talking about these temporary solutions. I was kinda muttering to myself, we, we need a permanent solution here. And even Linda wants one. I mean, I know you don't wanna deal with this. Gateway has proposed a permanent solution. We've met with their counsel here at Cecil. Don has been in discussion with Cannonsburg over this issue. So our offer is on the table to them. There's really nothing we can do right now, other than to continue to reach out to them to make them wanna deal with our proposed solution. They've not countered that solution. I've told you, Linda, they, they haven't gotten back, so...
So nothing's happened in the last several months, right?
Right. The ball's in their court, although we've pushed them a little bit. I, I drove through the plan the other day, and it, it's a pretty good ride from the beginning to the end to your section. So I can imagine they're not looking to give up that exit anytime soon. Um, but, and Dawn, I know that, I don't know if Cannonsburg's taken a, you've told them it's not even their road, so I don't know if they've just backed off since then or not. They have not, so...
You said that it's a long section to come through that plan of, um, Apple Hill. But who's, who's they? It's, the, the workers you don't really have to care about, and it's, and Miranda doesn't live there, the owners of Miranda, they don't live there. The borough council people don't live there.
I'm with you. I mean, I think, you know, Linda's less concerned, the workers are gonna be gone. This is gonna be the permanent ingress and egress is what she's concerned about. I mean, obviously, the workers are temporary inconvenience. But, um, you know, we've made, we've suggested proposed solutions. We've talked in executive session, I think, about different legal strategies. And, you know, we support, and I know the board supports closing that road to traffic coming through. It's just a matter of how we get there. Right now, we've closed it to the extent it's working, and I know to some extent it isn't. It's how much further can we go and deny Mr. Mohammed access to his driveway? That's really the impediment to closing that, as Bill said. We could kinda, you know, make a little Z in there probably, or something like that.
Well, I, I know, Dan, you've, you've gone and worked with us and put a, put a proposal on there for cul-de-sac and ending the road there.
Yes.
I mean, you know, can we push them more to get a response from them? Because we still haven't got a response on that cul-de-sac and doing that correctly.
When I was up there, Linda probably knows better than I, but they're getting pretty close to building that out up there. At some point, they're gonna want that.
There's six houses right now, and I bet you they'll be, they'll be in a couple of months.
Yeah, and they're pretty close to that.
And then, I believe, according to what I've seen, they probably, there's thirty houses, and they probably have a good fifteen houses that are gonna be built that are sold.
Well, what I like, what I like, Linda, is that the road's closed now, so any potential buyer isn't going to raise some sort of issue. They thought that was a thoroughfare there. That last lot there, Tom, at some point, they're gonna have to come to us, and we're gonna have to work that out. So, you know, like I said, we, we've sort of staked our ground. We blocked the access, maybe not as good as we, well, probably as good as we can right now. Maybe we can put more signs up. But it's almost like gonna be their issue. They're either gonna get to that last lot and we're gonna end up in court, or they're gonna respond to our, um, Dan's suggestion. Dan didn't just make this up. I mean, he met with them on site and went over the feasibility of it. So it wasn't like they were not involved. But it's hard to make them come to the table. They, they know what's there.
We were at that meeting whenever we, we...
I think you were out there and Dan and someone from my office, yeah.
So I really don't know if there's a solution on trying to stop people from going through there because of Mohammed's, um, he don't generally, see, the thing is, he don't generally use it that often. Probably, they, people say never, but that doesn't mean that he still doesn't have the right to have access if he chooses to. So I don't care if he uses it or not. He needs to have access to it if he wants it. So, um, they do try to park their cars there, but when they're not there, as from what I understand, is going to. And I didn't know what was going on because it was so cold that one day when I was like, hmm, where are all these cars coming from? And then I went and stood down at the road closure sign, and two cars were coming down and they turned around. So I guess, they said, whoops. So, but that's the only thing, I don't know, I don't know solution. My husband and I, we tried to figure out something just to stop them from being able to come through. That is private property that they're going over, uh, on Mohammed's, though, technically, like you said. That's his property that they're driving over. And he, and that's...
Is he a...
Trespassing signs up or what, you know, so...
Linda, is he okay with it for a while, with the status quo?
Um, well, um, it's, it's, it appears that, yeah, and I didn't have a chance to talk to him. I tried to call him, and, um, and I forgot to call him today. I don't know what in heck I was doing. I think senior moments here. But, um, uh, so, yeah, it's just, I think the complaints are that the, uh, traffic coming up and down Rose Drive from a couple of the residents there, that there's just more traffic again coming down. And so...
Are you on...
I don't see it really, except all of a sudden I see all these strange cars in front of my house and I turn it around, and then I know what they're doing. They're thinking they can go straight through, that they don't have, you know, 'cause we don't have a no outlet sign at that corner, Concello and Rose. We never needed it. We have it down at the bottom of the hill. They did put a no outlet sign up, way up on Lucia, you know, that generally governs the fact that, and we don't know if that was new or not because it's something we never noticed. But that don't mean anything because people just say, oh, I think it's really quicker for me to go. The only thing I think that's impeding people is Burnside Road is so bad that, um, until we get that paved, and when's that gonna happen, it's just, it's...
Can we put some more signs down near, Bill?
Uh, that's, yes.
Okay, to try to alleviate this, try to make people not even...
Yeah, we're just talking about putting a no outlet sign up, up there. Those, that, that thing is signed in accordance with the required, uh, PennDOT publication manual. It's a Type III barricade with the three-panel hash mark across it. Unless there's a physical barricade put there, people are gonna continue to go through there. There's no easy solution. I could put another half dozen signs up there, and as long as that hole remains open, they'll go through there.
Right.
So...
That, that is an issue all over the United States, even on, one man was so upset because they had a road clo, they closed the road in because people were flooding and people were going around the road closure, and they had to rescue them. So, you, you know, and then he was quite mad. So the mentality of people that don't wanna obey the law or just wanna have a quicker way to get somewhere is what we're doing.
Let's, let's see what we can do.
I just wanted to present it. I don't know if there can be any solution right now until we see what's...
Man, I can, I can reach back out to the lawyer and see if he's gonna respond. Obviously...
I mean, I guess, John, what's our next step if he's not, if they don't respond?
They will.
We need it, we need a permanent solution. At some point, their hand will probably be before, before ours because they need to develop that lot, or do something with that lot. That's what I assume. They're waiting till they get to that end piece to see where we go with this. But, you know, again, Mr. Mohammed's, um, part of that road is his private road. He's given us the ability to block that. Even without his permission, we wouldn't be blocking it right there. So...
I appreciate your attention and...
Can we sometime this week... Try to go up there and, and check it out and look again. I'd like to go with you, and let's go see what we can, what other options we have. All right?
But the permanent solution's coming, whether we are successful or not.
Yeah, and if we can, if we can get the chief up there and give some tickets going through, might stop a few.
We're gonna go up this week and see what we can do, if there's anything else we can come up with, okay?
Thank you so much.
Sean!
I do appreciate also the chief responding so quickly to our ongoing perpetual everlasting problem with the stop signs at the bottom of the hill. And, and I know, we all know that it's not a, when the things come, we know that it's, it's not gonna solve that problem, but at least if we get some people tickets to, to at least...
Word will spread real fast.
Yeah, yeah. Like my father was a policeman, and he used to say, "Well, I didn't give a ticket for a rolling stop sign if they got it. But if they didn't stop, they got a ticket." So...
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying that our police do that, but I'm just saying...
Sean, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
In Canada, and I think, I think on the turnpike, they give tickets out from the air or something. Can you put a camera up there that gets a license number?
I wish we had that technology. Not yet. We don't have that technology yet, no.
That's not legal?
Um, we don't even have that. I, I don't think the state police would even come out for something like that. They only have aircraft in Pennsylvania. But, um, we'll, we'll put the time and effort into like how we've been doing. So we'll be around making sure.
Okay, before we take the next, before we take the next person who wants to come up and, and, uh, address the board here, I wanted to mention, we did get the camera in this, this past month, and it's up above the exit sign in the back, back there. So what's gonna happen is we're recording the meetings, and they'll be on our website in its entirety. You'll be able to go on there and connect to a link and be able to see the meetings from now on. So I think it's good, good progress here that we'll be able to have everything put out to the public. Okay, is there the next, the next person who would like to come up?
Ed Beatty, twenty-two Birch Way. Um, I know it's just about time for the, uh, the new hospitalization for the administration building here. And I was wondering, are we gonna be able to attend that, the public, that is, when the broker shows up?
What do you, what do you, I didn't catch what you meant here. What were you talking about?
You're, you're, you're gonna redo the, the hospitalization for the people who are in this crowd?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
But you're not going to do that?
Don, explain what happened. We just got an email this past month on that, about the hospitalization.
Initially, uh, it was suspected that we would have to change our plans due to the Obamacare Act, or the enactment of the Obamacare plan, in which case, uh, Highmark, who is our, our particular provider, would no longer offer the same plan that they do now. So we would have to look for another product that offered the same or equal coverage under a different name. Well, uh, I believe the Obamas, as it was explained to me, the Obama administration was getting a lot of pressure from people saying, "Wait a minute, you said we could keep our plan." So under a process, what they refer to as grandmothering, they allowed small groups to keep their current plans without any penalties in the Obamacare, uh, that the Obamacare would initially serve to those that didn't participate. So that being said, uh, there's no need to change the plans. They will be able to remain the same.
When's the renewal date for the plan?
The renewal for the, the renewal date for, the plan renews every July. However, contractually, the board is obligated for two more years to, to keep the same plan.
We actually have, um, the Public Works and the Police Department for two more years, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, I mean, as far as the, um, in-house people go, uh, is the HSA, FSA thing gonna happen, or are we gonna keep talking about that?
The board is contractually obligated to provide an HSA for two more years.
Okay, um, can you send me an email on that to show me that?
The only document I'm thinking of is the collective bargaining agreement, when their contracts would be up, because that's where that information would be.
Is that, is that...
How can they be able to use your phone, please?
Yeah, that's, well, that's, I think, a different question. I think as to when that comes up, Ed, that, that's when, when the contract comes open. And I think the policy, and I think out of term, but I think the policy of the board has been to include for cost, um, analysis, the people, the individuals that work here that are not part of those collective bargain agreements in their particular plans. Is that accurate?
Has been past practice, yes.
They've done.
So everybody gets the same plan here?
So you're telling me it's not possible for two years to change from a HSA to an FSA? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Well, you know, I, I don't, I don't deal with the, I don't deal with the plans. But, Dawn, is it part of the purchase price or part of the cost when you factor in all the employees when you're doing the contracts? As to who would be, how many people are in there?
That used to be, yes, because the, the size of the group would, would determine premium, premium cost, yes.
Okay, so that might be, that might be part of the contract arrangement where they factored in a price with the Public Works or Police based on participants, and they've counted the people here in that participant... based on participants and they've counted the people here in that participant for two more years. Although, Ed, I don't know that for certain. I'm just speculating that might be the case.
I mean, how, how's the premium cost have anything to do with an HSA? It's just, HSA is not under the hospitalization. It's a totally different entity as far as who handles the money.
It is the same thing.
The HSA is a type of healthcare plan.
Oh, I understand that, but for instance, you got Highmark, Blue Cross and Blue Shield for your health insurance. The HSA is not managed by Highmark, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, am I correct?
No, it's not.
Okay, then that's, that's what I'm saying. I needed, I'd like to have the information on your HSA company. And I understand Mr. Smith's talking about costs, well, only cost to me would be sort of a management fee for that money, I would assume. But I'd like to have the information.
You can, you can submit a right to no request and I'll provide you with, I mean, be detailed in what it is you want and I'll provide the information.
Okay. Also, I guess the forensic audit's out of the question.
No, we're not gonna do, we have our audit gonna be coming up in the next month or two and there's no need for a forensic audit right now.
There isn't?
No.
Okay, was it correct that maybe like three years ago when police negotiations were negotiating contract, that they, there was a forensic audit started by a lady by the name of Amy McCarthy? Does anybody recall that name?
I know.
Cassiel, I think, and maybe Dawn would have been involved in that.
There wasn't a forensic audit asked to be performed. She was, she called herself a forensic auditor.
Exactly.
Yes.
And was, was something initiated there?
No, there was not.
There wasn't?
No, a, an audit was not performed.
She didn't ask for any materials or anything?
She had asked for materials, yes.
To me, that would be an initiation of an audit.
No, the audit was not conducted. She had initiated the request for information and withdrew that request.
I understand that, but she asked for materials, so to me that constitutes the beginning of an audit.
And it actually was, it actually wasn't an audit. You were misinformed. She was asked, you were misinformed, Ed. She was asked to gather information based on historical data, for ten, past 10 years of budgets, past 10 years of audit information. Yes, 10 years, yes. So that they could determine what is considered the ability to pay. It's a, it's a tactic that's used across municipalities in Pennsylvania where police departments determine if there's sufficient funds to determine how much they can go in their pay raises.
I understand that, but if you're determining sufficient funds and this lady's a forensic auditor, then I would assume that's what she'd be doing to determine her significant funds to pay for the pay raise.
No, she's just reviewing funds availability. It's not a forensic audit in, in the, I believe last meeting you read a definition of forensic audit. It does not meet that criteria for a forensic audit. All it is is a gathering of financial information to determine the, the, basically the financial health of the community.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Yes, there is.
Because you've, you've used up your two and a half minutes here pretty much.
Well, I think I says, let's, let's get the forensic audit going because in the words of a sign I saw coming here, let's get back on track.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other comments?
Good evening, everybody. This is for Chief Bukowinski. Our police dog. Is he privy to a bullet vest? A bulletproof vest?
Yes, he, he currently has one. It's gonna be expiring here soon.
Why is it gonna be expiring?
After so long, the material deteriorates, so they're only good for so many years, whether it's the sweat of the dog. It's just like our body armor. After five years, the, the, the actual carrier company actually states that they need to replace every five years because of the wear and tear.
All, all safety equipment, whether it's a harness, a hard hat, only have a certain lifespan before they have to be replaced.
Can I be with you in your office sometime whenever you're saying that this is gonna expire or that this vest is gonna be thrown on the side?
Yeah, sure. Anytime, we can actually plan to purchase a new one because the dog won't wear the new one until the one would expire. But yeah, due to the sweat of the dog or the wear of the dog wearing it, that's what causes us to have to get a new one.
Well, I may be willing to fund the cost of the vest. But I have to know what it's gonna be and I wanna need a receipt and everything. And I also wanna be in on it whenever you go to purchase it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other further comments? Because we'll be ready to move on with our business meeting then.
I have a couple of comments as a resident. I had the opportunity to contact Rachel Blaster, who's the Cross Creek Township Manager and Tax Collector. And I called her because we received notices of municipal taxes for Cross Creek Township. And they were two mils lower than the year before. That's most unusual. So I called her to double check if I were seeing correctly. And she said, yes, that's true. And I said, how did you get them to be lowered? She said, you should know. And I said, well, tell me. She said, the impact fee. I said, how did this happen? She said, well, we got $500,000. And she said that there was a culvert on Park Road or Parker Road, I'm not sure which it was, that had been very bad for two years, for, I'm sorry, for as long as she had been working there. And it was $250,000. They were able to take care of that. And the other $250,000 was used to reduce the taxes and that was the result of the impact fee from gas drilling. The second thing I saw, and this was all happened in the last week, was an article in Farm and Dairy. And it's regarding an area in New Philadelphia, Ohio. It says, "Property owners in the Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District will see their assessments paid to the district cut in half beginning next year. The Conservancy Board of Directors approved a plan April 18th to provide for a 50% reduction in all assessment payments from property owners beginning in 2015. Funds generated from the district's recent oil and gas leases of its property and the Utica Shell Development will cover project costs normally paid by the assessment funds." I just wanted you all to be aware of this, that there are other communities that are profiting. Cecil Township is not. That's all I wanted to say.
We're now gonna move on with our next part of the meeting here. Before we go to administrative reports, I'd like to get on to the first resolution because we have, I've been informed by Bruce that we have somebody here for it. And under Resolution Number 088-2014, Consider Subdivision Plan Application Number 2014-006. Torriero subdivision, location Pap Road, R1 zoning distance, Gino Torriero applicant. So is there the engineer here for them that you could come up to the microphone and we could discuss this? Thank you. We put you up to the front so you don't have to wait for the whole meeting.
I really appreciate that. That's wonderful. My name's Jamie Harshman with Harshman CE Group. Mr. Torriero is here as well. You've seen, I guess you've seen subdivision, this very simple subdivision, two locks, subdivision taking one, also breaking into the most complicated component of that was the illustration that we could provide a driveway to the flag lot, which is the rear lot that's being subdivided. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to go in and invite a new chair.
So you do have a driveway to the other lot then that you can access? I, Dawn, we don't have the ability to put it up there, right?
It's not working as well.
I don't think it is. Bruce asked me to give the board an explanation. I have one plan here, but essentially they're gonna build a flag lot. It's gonna come up. Mr. Torro is buying this piece of the woods. This is the flag lot. We're actually gonna construct the road. It's a little more escher to get up there. It's a steeper.
Instead of a straight shot.
They'll have an easement through this property, but technically their flag provides that location. They provided to us, they modified the access driveway to make sure that they could at least get an emergency vehicle up there. Given that back. There's no requirements in our ordinance related to that, but they've cooperated and given us some of that information. So they're gonna need to grade this up. Or Mr. Torro has built other houses in the township on tough pieces of ground, so I think he knows what he's into.
Dan, I have two questions. Yes, I have two questions. Dan, I don't seem to have the information here. Was this the property that was being split into less than a five acre parcel?
Yes, and they revised that.
Okay.
Yeah, they revised it.
And this is for a drip, drip irrigation?
Oh, drip irrigation, yes.
And does, does Washington County not require a backup?
We don't get involved in the sewage side of things. We just make sure that they provide a planning module.
It has a backup. There are, there are two sites approved.
Okay, and what, they're both for the spray?
They're both, are both suitable for the.
Drip irrigation. That's all I wanted to know.
Is there any other questions from any members on the board? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So passed. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Okay, now we're gonna go back to administrative reports and the township manager. Dawn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have prepared a written report that has been submitted to the board members. A majority of my items are actually within the resolutions, so my report will be short and I'll address any questions you have during the resolution section. Just two items of notation. We have, we have posted two job openings in the Observer Reporter and we're receiving applications now. That application closing date is May 16th. We'll review those applications presented to the board to see if we can hire some employees for our Public Works Department, excuse me, that was approved at last meeting. We also talked, excuse me, we also talked about the deposits on streets and I'm hoping when John gets into his report, he can indulge the board a little bit and see that it's a little more complex than just a simple.
About the snow, the snow being pushed out onto the streets, okay.
Right. I did send a letter to Jim Cannon, Jim's with Range Resources, discussing some of the comments that we've had in the past that the, the board was actually obstructing drilling in the township. And Jim and I have been playing phone tag, although he assures that's, that's not the situation. But he'll provide a letter to us and I hope to provide that at a future meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, let's move on to the, the Police Department next. Chief Bukowinski.
Good evening, everybody. April 2014. We had 360, 336 calls for service. We patrolled 12,180 miles. The township overtime hours were 53 hours. Reimbursed overtime hours were 70 hours. We had a total of 43 criminal investigations and 36 traffic investigations. We had 246 traffic stops, 56 removing citations. Might have been some of the stop sign violations, Mrs. Cowden. Non-moving citations, 59 traffic arrests. Yes, I, I said, it might have been some of the Burnside Road stop sign violations. Traffic arrests, four, and we had 112 written warnings.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Next, we'll go on to the building and zoning. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had provided my monthly recap by email to the board, just a few highlights. We had 37 building permits issued for the month of April, which resulted in about a little over $10 million worth of construction value in the township. I've also provided a recap of the code enforcement officers' activities for the month and as well as just the, the agenda from the planning commission and the zoning hearing board. One of which would be, will be further discussed later on is to set up a public hearing up for the In-N-Out grocery store on Miller's Run Road for, for them to provide fueling for automobiles.
A conditional use hearing.
A conditional use hearing. If the board has any other questions, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Okay. Okay, next is Public Works. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe everybody has received a copy of my April operations report. I have a request for the board that they respectfully consider purchasing a 3,000 gallon brine storage tank, pump station and 5 gallon, 500 gallon nurse tank with pump and ground speed application control. $15,000 was requested and approved in this year's budget for the purchase of the equipment. And the following quotes have been received. U.S. Municipal was low, low cost estimate at $13,905.80. Walsh Equipment submitted a cost estimate of $15,868. I'm recommending that we purchase the equipment from U.S. Municipal. Installation will be performed by in-house personnel.
I have, I have a couple of questions for. We did put that in the budget. How much did we allow in the budget for that?
$15,000.
Okay, and where is the equipment gonna be installed at?
The 3,000, 3,000 gallon brine storage tank will be, and pump station, will be installed up at South Point, at the salt storage dome up there.
Storage up there.
And the nurse tank will be outfitted on one of our spare trucks and it will maintain that tank up at South Point. Currently, the two trucks that are outfitted with the brine system are only capable of carrying 100 gallons in, in their tanks. They're, they're actually going back and forth to Peters Township to reload that 100 gallon tank.
That's what I was gonna say. We're purchasing the brine water from Peters.
Yes, it has a cost of 12 cents per gallon.
Is there any other questions from anybody on the board? Do I have a motion then to, we've, we've gotta buy this.
To purchase, to purchase the salt brine storage equipment.
$13,905.80.
I think it was.
$13,905.80.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been moved.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? There we go. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question, Bill. Bill, first of all, I'd like to thank you. I think that you and the Public Works are doing a really good job and I wanna thank you for it.
Well, thank you.
I have a question. When will the paper be done?
We expect it to be ready this week.
This week?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the engineer's support, a report. Dan?
Phil, saw the microphone. I'll get it off on there. Thank you. Under my report tonight, I'm just going to highlight some of the items. You all have a copy of my report. Under the development items, just a report that there was a pre-construction meeting last week on Anger Road improvements. We had the chief here and almost everybody from the township on the staff side and, and a couple of supervisors attended. I thought it was a good meeting. We got the issues out. We got some minutes out from that meeting. The developer will be pressing forward with those improvements here in the month of June. So we're gonna get out early and advise all of the people along the road as to what's going to happen there. In addition to that, we were asked to put together an estimate related to improving the other part of Anger Road from Fon Lane out to Burnside. I'm gonna hold on all those estimates until we talk about everything together. It's probably best that way. Talk about Coleman and everything else that's kinda out there. If that's okay, Andy?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, because it's an awful lot we're talking about.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff. There's, and then at the, moving on to the reserve at South Point, we had a meeting out there. Andy came along. The developer is actually looking for some other areas that they can take some, some fill from their property. At the same time, we need some help in moving some topsoil around. So I formulated at least what I thought was an email back to them and told them what, what conditions we thought that would be in. And we'll bring that back to the board once there's some acceptance on their part if they wanna help out over there and if we wanna help them out. So we'll be back to you at a later date with something on that. Regarding Windsor Woods, I've still not heard anything back from the bonding company. I do have a, a call to them and an email in to them. As soon as I hear anything back, I'll be sure to let everybody know. Under Cool Valley, we did submit the letter on the traffic study. I think it was a 12-page letter on the traffic study. Pretty, pretty in-depth amount of things missing in that study and concerns in there. There's supposed to be a meeting to be set up with PennDOT. We'll advise the board when that meeting is to be set up, but that's PennDOT that's gonna organize that. And then, just to go word today, well, I'm sorry, Clinger Park, Plavcheck has completed the seeding of the third field up there. They've requested final pavement. We need to discuss that with the solicitor in executive session, so we'll do that later. Under the South Point Boulevard, as everybody knows, they've been working on the Forest Main and redoing the sewers over there related to providing more capacity. There's been some issues related to that. One of them. One of them's going to force them to bore underneath South Point Boulevard. I just heard about that tonight. We will get with the township and make sure that they get the proper permits to do that boring under the road. Got to get more details on that, but I thought I'd pass that along. That's really it for my report. I think maybe Joe's here. We can wait till we get to that agenda item on Coleman Road emergency, if you want Andy to discuss all those items.
Discuss everything at that time.
Dan, I have a question.
Yes.
How does, how is our development being, going to be affected by the letter that just came in from the DEP regarding Canonsburg Houston Authority?
As I understand it, the letter that Elizabeth's referring to is, there's a letter from Emily Shade that's out there that's saying that essentially there is going to be no taps issued for the request that was made in the fall of last year. So effectively, if you don't have any taps and you flow to the Canonsburg plant, you're not able to obtain any taps at this point in time.
Well, did you get a copy of the letter?
Yes.
My recollection, I have it here somewhere, but my recollection is that it's a little further than that, asking everyone to back off and to reconsider the number of taps because we're not going to get all of them.
That's correct. That's a part of it. But, but essentially, right now, nobody has taps. So, so that's, that's even the more critical issue, is that if you have lots developed and you didn't purchase taps last year, you can't do your, you can't complete your development. Bruce can't issue a building permit.
And what is the status with the development that's presently going on, if you know?
As, as I understand it from developers that I've talked to, is like, for instance, at the reserve, they have some taps to cover a couple of their buildings for whatever, whatever, I guess, that they at least have.
What about the overlook on Anger Road?
The overlook, they have some taps left, but, but again, it's not for their build-out. They're, they're purchasing them ahead, but not way ahead. They don't have all their taps for the entire development.
And what about, it's South Point that, in South Point, the, no, not Ironwood.
Ansys or?
Town Center.
Some of the big buildings there?
Yeah, the apartment building that was going up.
Apartment buildings, I have their taps.
They're going to get them.
Yeah, they have them. Bruce, I don't want to steal Bruce's thunder, but Bruce won't issue, issue a building permit until he has sewer taps.
That is correct. I cannot, any, any building that comes in, it has potential for public sewage, I have not, I'm unable to issue any permit at this time, based upon DEP's letter.
But, but it's safe to assume that anything that is...
It's completely shut down right now?
Right. But, but, just to follow up, anything that is under construction has taps.
Every permit, everything that's under construction out there right now, there was, it was required for them to have, have evidence of a sewer tap and paid and provide that evidence, that receipt to me, so I could issue the permit. So, yes, you're correct. Everything that's under construction right now has sewer taps.
Okay.
But it, it could affect some things pretty rapidly here, like, for instance, future phases of the overlook don't have taps.
Correct.
They need money to pay for Anger Road. That's all predicated on taps being taken down and lots being taken down. So, I mean, it could have a ripple effect and affect a lot of the development that is going on.
Over in South Point, the developer, over in South Point, they've pre-purchased taps for, for most, most of their development years prior. So they, they have theirs.
Like Main Street.
Yes.
Yeah, Main Street does. But, but it's, it's a mixed bag, to answer your question, Elizabeth. Some people have them and...
Those that have paid for them in the past, there's no moratorium on those.
That's correct. They didn't cut them off completely.
Okay.
Okay, the, and the next on our agenda is the solicitor. John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Provided the board with a short report this evening. As the board is aware, next, I think it's Thursday, we'll be arguing Act 13, remand issues before the Commonwealth Court. There's four issues before the court. The PEC wants to go back to reviewing local ordinances to potentially deny impact fees. The medical gag provision, where doctors are not allowed to talk to their patients and/or others about chemicals that they may have been exposed to. The DEP under state law is to provide notice to spills from drill sites to people on public water, but not private wells, and we're challenging that the state has given the oil and gas industry eminent domain powers to take property for storage facilities. So that'll be next week. The industry has been granted to, time for gas storage.
Really?
Well, I don't know, because they say storage fields. Storage fields have the geology for wastewater storage as well as gas storage, so they don't say you have to store gas, you just have the ability to, to take a storage field. And that's why we don't have a lot of waste disposal wells around here, because anything that has, like the Donegal Storage Field, the, the geology to hold gas, would be ideal for storage of wastewater as well. So maybe sometime in the future.
Talking about injection wells, basically?
Well, they're not real, they don't say. They just say storage fields are, they've been given eminent domain powers. We've argued that the state cannot give private companies the power to take from citizens. We're still waiting for the Mark West Cecil Township zoning hearing board decision. I believe all the decisions from that court, from that time period, have been released, except for ours. I've advised the board about the Durbin run, water runoff issue, and they've advised that they've removed themselves from their home. I've asked Mr. Januso to make sure that our carrier is aware of that, and, and he has, and to make sure that we have counsel appointed for that.
I understand that they've moved out, moved to Bethel Park.
I don't know, I just got the letter, I think I sent, I know where they went, Elizabeth. So...
I didn't get a letter from you, only.
Okay. All right. The, we spoke about the Rose Avenue issue. The Dennis Flair case is still on the court's trial list. Don, I spoke to his counsel on another matter in Peters Township, and I think I may have asked your, you and Dan by email about potentially getting together. He wants to discuss if there's a possible resolution of that matter.
Yes, and you had mentioned a supervisor. I'd like to be involved in that.
Okay, so if...
Not be going into litigation. I said that initially, we're going to spend more money litigating it than we're going to possibly receive.
Okay. Well, I'll try to set that up, and I'll...
Thank you.
Let you know when that is. The snow deposit ordinance, I believe that's been circulated to the board. This time of year, there's no rush to get that in, maybe if we were in September, October. But if the board wants to review that, have any potential changes, it's one of those issues from an advertising standpoint we wrestled with, because it's amending our zoning ordinance, but it's not a zoning ordinance, as to what to comply with the advertising requirements. So we pushed it to the June, before the June meeting, if the board wants to have a public hearing on it.
You know what? That had to go to the Washington County first.
Well, I think we sent it off. I don't, we're not certain it had to, but we were kind of doing overkill because we're not in a rush for time, because it's not a true zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think what we're going to consider tonight is maybe pushing that till July. We'll see when it...
Yeah, that, that's fine. And then I just have a personnel matter, just the, the board is aware of. And not on my agenda is, or on my report is what Dan mentioned about Klinger Park. We can talk if the board wants to have executive session. And I prepared and sent to Mr. Januso today an access agreement for Farmcrest Drive to do some work on a concrete stormwater box. And Don asked me to do that actually earlier in April, and we've got the revisions back to him. And I think, Don, the individual's willing to sign off on that?
I have to present it to him.
Okay, then we'll come back to the board. Okay, so if the board, Don, if, I'm not sure if we sent that to everybody on the board. If you want to, or I can circulate that to the supervisors to determine if they have any questions or concerns. It mimics some of our...
Say it again?
It's a access agreement and release to do work on private property to...
Where?
It's on Farmcrest Drive. You want to person's name?
Not necessarily. I don't, I don't think I received it.
Okay, well, we'll, Don, you or I will send that out to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll circulate amongst the board members.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, next is Fire Department, is Lawrence Number One, is, oh, you're here.
I missed the last meeting due to scheduling, so if I go over anything, it was the previous month. Number one was the Clements Fire. All went well. I really appreciate 29 and 10, their support. We had active support from Peters, and we had South Bay there also. Everything went well. All, all people volunteered manpower and equipment, and it could have been really bad over there. We were able to knock it down. I was quite happy about that. And then, a couple days later, we had the suicide on a trail from the bridge. We were able to respond, get down there, but I would like to talk to Frank about getting access because of that fence on the Cecil side of the bridge. We literally had firefighters jumping over a rope to get down to the guy, give him...
I believe, I believe you should have a key, but I'll get your keys.
No, it's, it's the solid fence. You may want to put a gate there because there's no way of, because I just see more problems there in the future. That's something I just want to bring up to you. We've had people, we had a meeting with the Cecil Chiefs, Sean, the police chief, and South Bridge on our intercommunications and our problems, and it was very well and open. And Sean has been, and all the, very well communicating more. We're very, I want to give everybody a shout on that, shout out on that, because we are going to communicate better and be able to use our, allocate our resources a lot better and have a lot better communication. And there's some issues coming up, but we'll bring that up as they come up, to make improvements to the current situation, even from the school security aspects, what the fire department can do. As you can see, safe shooter is not the, or the shooter, what did they call Sean? Active shooter, I'm sorry, isn't the right term anymore because of the knife incidents that have been happening and stuff like that, and how we can respond and help. We had the Girl Scouts come out, we gave them the dog and pony show, and the Boy Scouts, and the police dog was there, and, you know, the kids go crazy over that. They like firemen for some reason, fire trucks, and they like police dogs, and I think we bought some pieces too that helped. And so we've been out with the community doing that kind of stuff. From the training aspect, we've had guys doing the road class. We had hazmat ops, thanks to Company 29, they used their facility, and we were able to recertify for the hazmat operations in this area. The big thing that we're working on now is our hydrants. We're mapping them. We've got a digital mapping program to go with our responding, but, and I'm not trying